And there's two.
Is it that time or?
They just they look like they're the same date.
Question eight.
Mr. Scott, would you like to lead us in the bunch? We got five thirty, guys. Let's get for the punch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's just clear how late the rich statements one nation under God indivisible with the procedure just to turn on.
Roll call.
Okay, now I need a minute to. Okay, Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie. Brenda Simmons. You're Craig Scott.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda commissioners?
I have none.
Someone entertain a motion to?
Yeah, I'm going to come over to accept agenda as presented.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott. We have a support.
Right.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, a review of minutes, August twenty twenty two, twenty four, regular meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the mess presented.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott.
For.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries August twenty second, twenty twenty four, closed session meeting minutes. Those were handed to us.
Motion to accept the mess presented.
Or
motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item four C, September fifth, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the mess presented.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott.
Oh, second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons.
I already read them.
Any further?
Joy.
Any further discussion?
This piece of.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item forty, September fifth, twenty twenty four, closed session meeting minutes.
Motion takes up.
At work in.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
What was the motion?
Opposed. Public comment and agenda item manners. Any public comment in the room on agenda item manners only? Any public comment on the phone? Oras badens were received from a Sabo Valley Committee Meta Health Authority related to the meeting minutes and agenda. Linda Keeler related to the animal control village, northeastern Michigan Community Clinic Agency related to meeting and minutes. Those have been received and filed. Consent agenda. I think we can take these individually. Are you guys okay with that?
If you'd like.
Seven A, we have resolution to accept Office of Highway Safety Planning Secondary Road Patrol Grant. This resolution is sponsored by the by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The Office of Highway Safety Planning is responsible for administering the Secondary Road Patrol and Traffic Accident Prevention Fund. In each fiscal year, fifteen million of the proceeds deposited in the state treasury for taxes on the retail selling price of spirits must be allocated to the Secondary Road Patrol and Training Fund. Approval of the resolution will authorize acceptance of ninety one thousand five hundred nine dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty five for use on secondary roads for the following services: patrolling and monitoring traffic violations, enforcing the criminal laws of the state, violations of which are observed by or brought to attention of the sheriff's office while providing services, investigating accidents involving motor vehicles, providing emergency assistance to persons on or near a highway or road patrol.
I'll make a motion to so to approve the resolution.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott. Or support from Commissioner Simmons. Further discussion?
I think it was explained very well last meeting.
Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven B, resolution to accept a grant from the Michigan Commission Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. On January thirty first, twenty twenty three, the state appropriated funds to support the implementation of required annual in-service training standards for all licensed law enforcement officers. Continuing professional education requirements are intended to ensure that all licensed law enforcement officers maintain a level of knowledge, skill and ability necessary to enhance proficiency and professionalism throughout their career to appropriately serve the people of Michigan. Approval of the resolution will authorize acceptance of a Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards Grant in the amount of forty seven thousand eight seven forty seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty six cents to offset training academy expenses of two sheriff deputy recruits.
I'll make a motion.
Motion Commissioner Simmons.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott for the discussion.
We discovered all the expenses for those who at the academy. All to offset. Never mind. I've got I've got the answer already. Thank you.
Is to accept the bonds to offset. Yeah.
Right. To offset. Yeah, I got it.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Item seven Z, seven C, resolution to accept a bid for snow removal and seasonal maintenance services. This resolution is sponsored by the administrator slash controller Timothy Delahanny. The operation of Ogma County Government necessitates annual snow removal and seasonal maintenance services. Bids were solicited for snow removal and seasonal maintenance services per invitation to bid project number one six dash two four. Finish Concrete Incorporated submitted the only responsive and responsible bid for snow removal and seasonal maintenance services. Approval of the resolution will formally accept the finished concrete incorporated bid for snow removal and seasonal maintenance services for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five winter season at the same rates as the previous season. Motion Commissioner Simmons.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Further discussion? Roll call vote. What? Go ahead. Did you have something?
No.
Okay, roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item eight A, resolution to authorize veterans memorial improvements. This resolution is sponsored by the administrator slash controller Timothy Delahanny. The Veterans Memorial located at the center of Hilton Avenue and Eighth Street in West Ranch was established in honor of all military veterans of Ogma County. The flagpole and cement work at the memorial needs to be repaired or replaced, and two Ogma County veterans who wish to remain anonymous have offered to do so. Approval of the resolution will authorize acceptance of the anonymous facility improvement gift with sincere appreciation.
Motion.
Motion Commissioner Simmons.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Do you want to add anything to this, Jeff? Jeff Nichols? You're muted if you're trying.
Hold on Jenny, I gotta allow him to unmute first.
Oh. Big brother.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
No, uh, no, I, I, uh, I didn't realize that the, the piece of property where the veterans memorial is at belonged to the county. And we just found that out last week when we were talking with Brian. And anyways, the, the two veterans have offered to replace that, but uh, in the meantime, the alliance is also requesting, and not to be part of this resolution though, but they're looking to actually make changes. The trees have gotten it's quite large and they now overshadow the memorial. Uh, the Veterans Alliance is looking to get permission to have the city use the trees as maybe Christmas trees and so we can get rid of them and and replace them either with smaller trees or re redesign that landscape. There they still need to talk about it, but they are looking to have those large pine trees removed because they're just overshadowing the memorial now. That's just something for us in the future.
Thanks, Jeff. Did you have anything to add to, uh, the two individuals that are?
No, we appreciate what they're doing there and then, uh, they but they both offered to, uh, like I said, replace the flagpole, but, uh, uh, yeah, we appreciate it and and this was looked into in previous years. The alliances freed itself up a little bit and agrees to the change out to the flagpole.
Well, thank you for that, Jeff. Any further discussion about that commissioners?
No, Jeff's good with it. I'm good with it.
Mr. Simmons?
I'm good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item eight B, Honorable Mary BB, eighty second district court related to fiscal year twenty twenty five district court budget and position allocation. Good evening, guys.
How are you?
Good, good, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Fire serve.
Yeah, there you go. Use it however you saw. Do you have one for that?
Okay.
Yes. Got it.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I wanted to, um, thank you for being patient. Unfortunately, I've been ill and had some other stuff, so wasn't able to get here when I wanted to. So I wanted to, um, talk to you about our current, uh, new budget that we proposed. I think you should be overall very happy because it's a quite a significant savings, um, in the district court. And through the last year and a half, the one thing that I've realized with everything we've gone through and the changes I've had to make and what Danielle has had to deal with between the audit and the cashiering that we've adopted in our, our court now is that the what should have been done probably when the courts joined and we started having one judge is we should have one administrator. Um, all the other judges have one administrator. It's very difficult having two administrators um, because you want to make sure things are done correctly, efficiently, the same. Um, and as a judge has to ask, go back and forth every other day. You it's hard to keep up with that if you have two administrators. The other thing is too, is that what happened, you know, we used to, we always had two administrators before because we always had two judges. There was a judge here in Ogma. There was a judge in Roscommon. That changed. Um, and now it's one court and it's one judge. Um, also what happened in what twenty twenty, I believe, is that your guys a server here for the district court started dying, dying. Excuse me, I still am having trouble talking. Um, started dying. You guys could not afford to fix the server, so they joined with Roscommon server. So all of our caseload server is the same now, so we're connected. Um, so changes that are made in the backside on one court affects the other court. So if it's not done correctly, it can cause a lot of issues for the other court as well. And most of that stuff is done by the administrator who's making those changes as the laws change, our reporting responsibilities change and all of those things. So again, having that connected server as well. And the that's a big savings also for if you look at the software equipment maintenance. This between the old budget that was kind of requested, um, for originally for the twenty four, twenty five that we that we put in, not the one that Tim had put in, but I think most of his stuff was the same except maybe the administrator salary. Um, it was twenty nine thousand because JMS was our programming. If they if there's two administrators, they're like, we're going to charge both counties because we're having to deal with whatever changes that one administrator makes compared to what the other one makes. So when we combined and Danielle came over temporarily to help, they she got a hold of them and said, listen, it's just me. I'm going to be taking care of all the changes. So they gave us a reduction even for this past year. So we had a lot of savings from that just even this past year. And so it's going to be like a twenty three thousand dollar change um, between the server and a couple of other programs that we're now able to combine between the two courts um, into one. So it's a significant savings, um, to you guys and our budget by doing that and having one administrator supervise everything. The what we had on here, if you look and as you can see, even from the, um, original budget from twenty three, twenty four, if you looked down the original budget from twenty three, twenty four, it's this new budget is actually even a savings from that that original budget from twenty twenty, twenty three, twenty four. It's obviously a significant savings from the requested budget because what we did when we were still trying to determine whether or not we were going to do one suit one administrator. Our original twenty four, twenty five budget, we included if we were to hire a new administrator. Um, and we just put the salary, if you look at the salary for the proposed old twenty four, twenty five budget, we just did fifty eight, six, five, six, five, six, just based on what the FLSA is, um, for exempt employees starting January first said that has to be their salary. It wasn't like a set salary. It was just trying to give an example of what it would be potentially, um, if we were to hire one here. So that obviously, um, we took off of the requested new budget and what we did was if you look under, it's called, um, District Court Central Services. And then kind of in the middle.
Yeah.
And it's got seven, eight, four oh three. What you on the second page, what we did was provided you a kind of a breakdown of what the split would be between Roscommon and Ogma. So Roscommon and Ogma would both share the position, but it's not just the administrator's salary position. It would, it's also includes my things that you guys pay. Technically, you get it gets reimbursed, but um.
Benefits.
Benefits. Um, experience, office supplies.
Supplies. So like this last year, um, both courts were significantly in need of piles, file jackets or whatever. It's usually quite a big expense every other year. And because both courts needed it, I got a quote for one large purchase order. I mean, there was a couple of changes that had to take place between both courts so that their files were exactly the same, but it was a fifty percent savings. Just to order, you know, double the amount of files. Um, it's things like that that has come out to be quite beneficial for both counties in addition to the service contracts. Um, and that's so that's why you see that that's also on there. I've planned out what JMS costs for both. It's one invoice split fifty fifty and I pulled that out of what your existing soft software contract was. And then there's, um, when it was prior to getting a new quote, it was a six thousand dollar increase.
So things like that are nice as well, where we can do bulk ordering and and split the difference and save both counties money by doing that bulk type of ordering for our office supplies. Um, travel for, you know, expenses, service contracts, dues and training can be will be shared. Um, and so we just wanted to break it down of what it would be for um, both counties, um, splitting it. And but if you look at the at the bottom and we went through and and the one thing that Danielle is really, really great at is budgets and trying to figure out savings and helping, you know, if you look at even what we've spent our activity. Um, you know, we're well below what our budget, um, is for the year. Um, she worked very hard to stay within a budget, save budget, not spend the budget where she can. So we've done, we've been able to do that this year already. Um, and then putting considering that, taking a look and saying, okay, well, can we really need this a budget of this amount because we don't spend this much? What are we going to see this year? So we've got some other savings, as you can see, changes that are saving some money as you go along down the the change list there. Um, the one thing that I wanted to, um, bring up was the lean position. So you guys know I've taught you about the importance of us getting lean to the courts, um, to protect and make sure that, uh, warrants and things are being removed quickly, efficiently, being put into the system. Um, and it's not anything that nine one one has done wrong. It's just that when we're not attached and it's not right with us, we don't have the ability to just take it to them right that second. And then we send it over and if it's not done right that second, because they have other responsibilities, that bench warrant could still be in there. We've had people that, you know, the bench warrant was supposed to be recalled. They leave, they just happen to get pulled over and hit arrested again. You know, that's happened in the past. I don't want that happening. I want us to have the ability to have a lean in our office. Um, it's something that I feel very strongly about. It would be a savings because right now we paid nine one one to do that. Um, and we'd like to not pay nine one one to do that and do it through the courts instead for efficiency, um, preventing any type of false arrest later on and making sure that everything is going well. So what we did was we included the fifteen thousand that we're currently paying lean into our budget and then just kind of put on the side here a possible savings of fifteen thousand change down the road if we can get that position, um, put into place. So as some of you might know right now, hang on a second. Some of you might know right now that we have, um, a position that's not filled because Turen left. Um, I've been holding off hiring anybody just because of the, um, union contracts going on right now. I wasn't quite sure what to tell them. I would be offering them. You know, what their pay would be, what their insurance would be. And so I wanted to not rush on that. It's been a rough summer for my staff with that decision because we're short-staffed as it is. And not having a person there makes, um, it very difficult to run the office, especially if anybody else happens to be sick. We've had illness. We've had some family members, um, lost this year. And so in my, when my staff, if one's missing, it throws the whole, um, thing off course. But I understand where we're at fiscally with the county. And so talking to Judge Bennett and Danielle and, um, my staff, you know, my thought process would be to incorporate, create a new position, which we, union time right now, being the contract would be a great time to do that. That would be kind of a lean, lean clerk posit position. Um, taking the position I have right now, adding the lean to it.
Not new because not an added.
Right, not an added position. The position that has not filled.
Yeah, to it.
And adding lean duties to it, creating a different job description and adding the lean duties to that. And then figuring out where that would fit into the union contract as what type of, um, it would have to be its own because there's not one existing right now in the current mean current contract for lean. And then that savings would obviously come in then when we're not paying out of my budget anyways. Um, and we would, and we've told, uh, Circuit Court and Front Court, we would be happy to, um, take over their warrants as well to help them out. So they're not doing that. I've spoken with Jesse and I, and I want to talk to her more. Um, there's some things that we would have to discuss with her because we're not a twenty four, seven or obviously, and there's things that we would have to talk with her and probably the sheriff about as far as, um, after hours with warrants and things like that. So we would work on that. And Danielle has already started talking to Tom. She's already started talking with some of the lean thing. Uh, people because it's not like we can just like tomorrow, we have lean. There's things that have to be set up, put into place, training that has to be done. Um, all of those type of things before. That's why we're not saying it's out of our budget right now. It's more likely a twenty five, twenty six going forward. Um, type of change, but I don't, I don't know exactly how that will look until we get with Tom some more and figure out exactly what that cost would be if if there's any, what it would be and how that would work. So what we have right now, just as far as total savings between the old and the new is a hundred and nine thousand three eighty seven. And then if we get the lean one into place, you know, it'll be another fifteen thousand going forward. Um. I know. So I mean, I think, I mean, that's, that is the goal is to, um, create that lead position through the position that I have already that we haven't filled. Um, you know, I'm the district court lost an employee when Lindsay left and have never, that position was been eliminated. Um, and I will tell you that it's very difficult with the staff that we have already because pretty much all of our staff is allocated to like one role, one main role, like Kelsey does traffic and Allison does probation and, um, Joel does civil. So if, you know, but and there's no extra people to help with that. So if Kelsey is gone, that means somebody else has got to leave their duties and help with the traffic because there's nobody else to help with traffic. There's not like an extra person that you can allocate to all these different things to help. If Joel's gone in civil, we have a real issue because nobody is cross trained in civil. That's a problem. That's something I'm going to have to, I have to rectify, um, because our civil case load is up like two hundred cases right now. And that's huge in civil. Um, and when you have only one person that does it, that's a lot. So it's, you know, it's already difficult. We've had to deal with that, having an employee that's not we've not filled the position and having people sick recently, some people that, um, lost a mother recently. Um, it's been a rough road. My staff has done great and I'm very appreciative of them. Um, but we need to get that position filled. But I'd like to make it that lean position to help us with the savings as well.
Mr. Scott.
Um, what's the title of the, um, of the staff opening of the vacant spot? What's the title?
Deputy Court Clerk.
Right now, the one that's open right now.
Deputy Deputy Court Clerk.
How many of those are there?
There's two right now.
Okay.
And the open position. So that would make three.
So there's three positions.
Yes.
By that title.
By that title. Correct. Yep. Civil clerk, criminal clerk.
Just just run me down like all the titles because I don't know.
Okay, so you have in your, the civil division of the district court, you have one clerk. That's it.
Oh, wait, one second. We're just talking district court. That's nothing circuit, nothing.
No, we have our own civil division, right? This is our court. Yeah, our court. So Joel.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, civil division.
Okay.
Evictions, small claims, credit card. Okay, gotcha. You have your criminal division.
Okay.
Right? All offenses originate on a district court. You have your traffic division. We all know about the civil infractions, right?
Yeah.
Then you have your probation department.
Okay.
Right, which in many counties is consists of a probation officer and a clerk. Ogma County doesn't have that. They just have one person.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And then you have your court recorder to record all the proceedings.
Oh, okay.
Now, the court recorder.
That's.
Yep.
Yeah.
The court recorder.
I only watch it on TV, so you gotta be.
Court recorder, the traffic employee, and I'm going to call her an employee right now because your traffic employee, which you would say what could be a clerk, there is no traffic clerk in the district court in Ogma. It's your traffic magistrate.
Okay.
Okay? And the court recorder and the probation officer all wear the second title of magistrate. Right? Because you have to share in an on-call and you have to do swear tos all the time to a person.
And yeah, formal informal hearings and.
Okay.
So there are six positions within the Ogma District Court.
Three magistrates and three deputy clerks.
Correct. Yep. And we have five filled right now because one we don't have.
Yeah, I get it.
And and so and if you think about it though, like when you say three magistrates, and remember we got into a thing with that and I try to tell people we don't have three magistrates. We have a traffic clerk who also does magistrate duties. A probation officer who also does magistrate duties. And then our, um, court recorder who also does magistrate duties. So their main jobs are traffic clerk, probation officer.
How many people total?
Six. Six.
Okay.
Five currently.
All right.
Yes.
We just exchanged titles back and forth.
Well, yeah, because the thing.
Okay.
I just want to emphasize that, and we hadn't brought this up yet. The only corrections that I couldn't make with the hellacious audit findings all revolved around the fact that there is a very, very small staff in Ogma. So I can't split one hundred percent duties the way that
Okay.
Michigan legislature has said.
Just trying to get the background of it.
Yeah, so we have people that wear multiple titles and that's just what we have to do.
And that's.
Yeah.
Finally.
And and we also, just so you know, is like our one clerk, she is actually under their, um, classifications, she is the court collections clerk.
And the criminal clerk.
And so she does criminal work, but she, her title now is court collections clerk because she specifically does all of our show causes to try to get our money collected. Um, and so, you know, she has that extra title. I can I just say that because the union actually calls it a court collections clerk um, that she is at as well. And as Danielle was trying to say, you know, with the findings that we had with the audit and, you know, and you guys have talked a little bit, I've heard you guys talking about it in one of your meetings recently, um, when you're taking money in, right? You guys know, we take a substantial amount of money
Yeah.
into our office, whether that's through credit cards, people coming in and paying cash. Um, you know, whatever. There's a significant amount of money that comes through us and areas that we just can't fix for them right now to make them happy is the fact we don't have enough staff to do the checks and balances that scale wants you to do to have that checking, you know, making sure is this the right amount of money that came in? Was it counted correctly? Is it, is it a different person that's taken it to, you know, deposit or whatever the situation is, even even with it with mail, I think.
Yeah, the person opens the mail shouldn't be processing payments.
Right.
Okay.
So they want you to one person open the mail, one person to process the payment, one person to do this. We don't have the staff to do that. Thankfully, they they understand that we're short-staffed. Um, but those were the things out of all of the findings that we had, the things that we could not fix were those type of things where we just don't have the staff to do it and they have to realize that for now. Interestingly enough, we're the scale is requiring us to do a weighted caseload study, the entire state because, um, what we've been told is they believe that pretty much all courts are understaffed for what the work that should be done, um, to be done correctly. Um, so we'll see how that plays out. We, I start that on, we start that our entire, everybody, the whole state, um, starts that on Monday. So we'll see how that goes.
It'd be great if the state finds that and and then gives us some some money to allocate more positions.
And Jenny, you are preaching to the choir. That's.
That will come.
That's what I hope too for everybody.
I appreciate your work on this budget and the savings it was found. Um, I definitely don't want to take away from that. I'm, I'm looking at this and and I don't, I know nothing about the court system at all and I'm okay with that. I don't really want to. Um, I don't mean that disrespect. I know nothing about the court system at all and I'm okay with that. I don't really want to. Um, I don't mean that disrespectfully at all.
That's okay.
But I'm looking at this, this jo- this, this top one I'm looking at is administrator. Um, now, if I'm not mistaken, we also share in one of the other courts, and I don't know which one, again, I know nothing about them. We share an administrator with Ross Common for another one, correct?
Yeah.
So this role with sharing is, is not new to the court system. So it's being done. I'm, I'm looking at this, this amount between the two, which is shared, forty-six thousand pieces, which is ninety-two thousand dollars.
Yep.
Again, I'm sure that there's a lot to that role. I know nothing about it. But when I look at that figure of ninety-two thousand dollars, are, is that what our administrators are, are make? Is that what the other administrator is making? Is this, is this a common number for that? Is this?
I mean, not, not in our, not in our local area, no. I mean, there's other administrators throughout the local areas and the state that make that and, and much more. Um, the dip, and the way that I look at it and is, is that it depend, every role is different. What the other administrators do to compare to what the district court administrator does is different. Um, the amount of employees that they oversee is different. Um, Danielle will be overseeing thirteen staff. Um, that's different than somebody who oversees four. Um, you know, so they're in, in budgets, the type of budgets that they do, the type of reports that they do. And everybody has their role and I'm, as far as I'm concerned, everybody, you know, you look at overall and everybody's underpaid. We know that. And people are not getting raises and they're not getting, um, you know, where they need to be for cost of living and all of that stuff. And I recognize that. Um, but the same time is that I can't have somebody, ask somebody to come in and take on an entire another staff budget. All the works entail, the reports, everything the responsibility would be and be like, oh, and you're gonna just make the same amount of money you make now. That's not feasible. So this is the amount that uh Chief Bennett and I have agreed upon. I'm just presenting you my budget. So that's, that's where I'm at. I mean, it, in the end, you don't hire for me, fire for me, or decide what I pay my people. So I'm, this is the budget I'm, I'm putting in there. The, this is not a union position. It's not held to the union contract. Um, and I'm saving you a hundred and nine thousand dollars, which considering that situation that we're in now and trying to prevent, and, and Jenny, I stress this the most, trying to prevent anybody else ever coming into this and what, into what I came into when I first started here. Because that's my concern is that if we, if I hire somebody else, I'm not gonna be able to hire somebody that has the experience that's needed for this type of position. Trying to train them, trying to make sure they understand a budget. I'm not here all the time to oversee that. And so what I see happening, because I'm one judge with one court, is that everybody's gonna continue to go to Danielle. And so she's gonna be doing the work and not have the title or the compensation for that. And it's not fair to anybody. And also what you're, what, what I find hilarious is that the people that would complain about the salary don't complain about the fact that the district court administrator made twenty-something thousand dollars less than all the other administrators previously. So it was okay for district court to make twenty, fifteen, twenty thousand less than everybody else.
I know nothing about that. I'm just looking at the number. And I know, I think that's more than our, our share. You know, I'm, I'm looking at the summer and again, I know nothing about it. I'm, I'm looking at this and that number just.
Well, and I guess I would like some clarification. When you asked if that was a normal salary, like, you, did you mean between the two counties or like in the state?
I just mean, no, I just mean, maybe, maybe if, if there's another administrator in the, one of the other three, there's three courts, correct?
Right.
And one of the other courts that shares.
None are judicial officer.
Pardon me?
They're not, none of them are a magistrate or an F O C referee either.
Okay, I, again, I know nothing about that. I'm asking if there's another individual that is in a very similar position.
Not in these, not in either county, no.
In our county, that's doing this shared role, that's, that's making that same salary. I, I don't typically look at salaries, but this is set in front of me and.
Right. What she's telling you, Jenny, is that there's no, we have other administrators, like I said, but their roles are different. She's also a magistrate, a judicial officer, so she can do search warrants. She can um do all of those things that those other administrators do not do. So that's what I'm saying, the roles are different and the responsibilities are different and the oversight is different. And so in, in that, and we've decided that this is, is a, the amount that we're going to pay that position um because of those things. And, and again, the amount of staff and the types of budgets and reports and responsibilities are just different. They have their roles and, and I, like I said, I believe everybody is underpaid. Um, but I don't control everybody's budgets and I don't control everybody's positions. I just don't want to have two, two administrators just because it's always been done that way. When it was done that way originally because we needed two administrators, because we had two judges. We don't anymore. And whether people like it or not, it's one combined court. And now one combined server, one combined judge. One combined everything practically, except for obviously the law enforcement agencies. But, you know, it's, it's tough. I, I get it and I don't take it lightly. But this is what's gonna help make sure this county court runs sufficiently and effectively and doesn't go backwards. And it also helps this county at a time when they really need that. Both counties with savings in their budgets. Things are tough. Insurance rates are going up and, you know, we're in union contract negotiations. I'm trying to do my part to make sure this county doesn't have any issues going forward with the district court. And that we also are saving a substantial amount of money because, again, the service contracts and everything else, it just makes sense to share. And I can't do that if I have another administrator. Um, so I don't, that's where we're at.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
Yeah, I do have something. I see down here for uh twenty-three, twenty-four activity and it says through nine thirty, twenty twenty-four and it says six hundred and eleven thousand. And I also see the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five request, the new, with the old was nine oh ninety, seventy-six. The new is eight hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. So what's the six hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars?
That's what we spent so far this year.
That's what had been spent so far this year when this budget was created.
So it's not through nine thirty? You haven't. This, this six hundred and eleven forty-seven doesn't flow through nine thirty?
These budget reports, when you generate them, twenty-three, twenty-four, it's just telling you that through this fiscal year and I, through nine thirty, this is what so far had been spent. I mean, anybody else that utilizes.
It doesn't mean two nine thirty.
No, it's not nine thirty yet.
I know it's not. That's why I'm asking that question.
This is how much at the time that this budget was.
This shows in the upper left-hand corner.
Oh, it doesn't have that on these ones.
Hey, but I looked between the, the new and the old. I mean, the, the original was nine hundred and nine thousand, eight seventy-six. The new's eight hundred and forty-nine. So, I mean, you really haven't saved us any money because that money was, wait a minute, let me finish. I've got the floor. So the total saves between the new and the old, what you requested and the next one that you requested, a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And what I'm seeing right now is I don't know if you're gonna be spending uh another hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from last year to this year. So uh, because right now it's six hundred and eleven and between the two, um it's, it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So between eight hundred thousand, six hundred and eleven thousand, that's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars more you're asking for. So are you gonna spend another hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two dollars more this year for twenty-three, twenty-four?
She's got a valid point. By looking at this, it looks like you've spent your budget for this year, you're at six hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
To date.
Correct, but, right.
But our original budget was eight oh eight.
By looking at this, it doesn't look, I, I see that, but she's got a valid point. By looking at this, it looks like that you didn't spend that eight oh eight for eight amount, eight oh eight, five eighty.
Right, we haven't. We have to.
Cur- cur- she, she's just going by these numbers. I understand what she's trying to say. She kinda went about it a long ways. Um, that's not, we're not to the end of the year.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is, the savings, when they said ask for the new and ask for the old. The old's.
Yeah.
The old's a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars more. So is that money really saved? Cause we haven't spent it. These are just, these are just requested budgets. So my understanding is, my, my question is, why can't it be less than eight hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine?
Tim, do you wanna speak, do you wanna speak?
Just glancing at this, there's a couple of big ticket items on here that we know we're gonna hit this budget. Number one is the retirement. Uh, there's about sixty thousand dollars shy of what's budgeted right now. There will be another payment that has to be made. And for whatever reason, this activity gets hit pretty hard with the retirements. It just has to do with all the actuaries put together, who's responsible for what. Our auditors and dividing all that up. But that number is gonna be higher. Another one, the health insurance, you can see is, is still uh I think about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars more that'll be spent there. And go up to the wages, um obviously those are not completely spent out yet. And we've got a couple of pay periods yet to report in. So it's a six-eleven number, I think is a little deceptive right now. I do think they're gonna come in under the budget, just glancing at this. There's a couple of pretty big ticket items out there yet to hit this that, that will hit within the next couple of weeks.
Right.
I have a comment. And that's fine, and I understand that. My question is this, where the heck are we gonna get this money? I mean, do we lay a lot of other people off? Because we don't have money.
Okay. Tim, do you wanna go ahead?
Just um, what the court's presented here are the old and the new, one of the requested budgets. On the recommended budget, um, it was already knocked out a little bit, but um this will actually result in a seventy-one thousand dollar savings from what we've already looked at. So it won't be additional money. It will definitely be less money than what we've already recommended moving forward. So um, uh, the, the balance of this, I mean, I, I wanna go through and update the the budget spreadsheets that you have so that you can see those totals and how they impact. Uh, but uh, either way, I mean, if you wanna compare it to what was requested or what was recommended evenly, it's a, it's a substantial reduction.
That means they, they asked for too much in the first place.
Judge B, you have the floor, go ahead.
Ms. Simmons, I hate to tell you this, but you have to provide me a budget. That, that. That is required for you to provide a budget for the court to run sufficiently. I mean, so you have to provide us a budget so that we can run the court. So I have to pay staff. I have to do everything that I can to make sure the court can run sufficiently. That is, that's the job that your guys is mandate to make sure that we have the money to do that. We have cut, and what I'm trying to show you is, as Tim said, we're at six-eleven as of the time this was written.
Right.
You know, we're going to, we're going to be under budget of what was originally, I, everybody usually gives you, gives you a budget of what they think they're going to need. Your, your desire, I would think, was that everybody comes underneath budget if they possibly can. So, but we, you give like an approximate, like we think this is much we're gonna play, pay in office supplies. You never know what that's always going to be. But the goal is to try to stay in our budget. We try to stay in our budget. The department, the requested budget was based on if I had to hire a new administrator of what, with their um benefit, benefit package, their retirement package, all the service contracts that I'm not gonna be able to cut in half, that, that is going to get us to either the nine oh nine, eight seventy-six approximately or whatever Tim had, and I don't remember Tim, what your proposed budget was, which was giving my, I think his request was for the administrator to make forty-something, which that would be a joke. That's less than what my magistrates make. However, with the new budget, it is a savings. It's, it's a, as he indicated, just in his general thing, seventy-something thousand, but he's not even putting in all the other changes that we've made to even go lower. It's a significant savings. We have to have a budget for staffing. I, I'm trying to be as realistic as I can. We've decreased multiple things here, trying to help. Um, and again, it's office supplies and everything else to make it less. I, I understand, I mean, you, you have to come up with the money to pay for the district court budget. That's.
We have to come up with money to do for a lot of.
I know that, but I'm saying, what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say to you is that I can't control every budget. I'm trying to save you a hundred thousand dollars out of mine. I can't control every other budget.
Anything, anything comes from you? Commissioner Mayhew, do you have anything?
No.
Anything, Tim? Thank you.
I got a couple other questions.
I'm sorry.
I was still on my.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right. It's all right, the chairman, the chairman took it a different way and I just I'm just waiting patiently, that's all.
Your turn, sir.
How long has the staff been opening and been vacant?
July, yeah, July.
Okay, July, so uh three months. That's three months of wages and retirement and all that stuff we didn't have to pay. That reflects into the six-eleven, of course.
Yep.
Um, the, I wanted to ask about the lean position.
Yes.
Okay, um. Will, will you be able to take care of all the liens that, that the county has?
No, no, not, not all the lean, just the courts. Yeah, I know, wouldn't that be nice?
I mean, I was here, I was here back. This, this fight has been going on for seven years.
So th- there's two different types of warrants and that's an open arrest warrant, right? So let's say that a crime was committed or a vague investigation was done, prosecutor's office issues charges on someone, right? A warrant, an open arrest warrant goes into lean. That, that warrant must have a twenty-four hour agency confirm if somebody was arrested down in Detroit. Up, they'd have to call someone up here, whoever's associated with that open warrant and confirm the details and the individual's information on whether or not they could arrest. That's by statute.
Okay.
Differences, court bench warrants are valid on their face. Meaning the court issues a bench warrant, there, whatever information is in lean, it's valid on its face. You don't have to have a twenty-four hour confirming agency associated with it. So what I mean by that is, is that obviously, right now, you have the sheriff's department, they have a lot of open arrest warrants that the, the court could never take that on because we're not a twenty-four hour ag- agency to confirm those, those arrest warrants. Does that make sense versus our bench warrants and any other court's bench warrant?
I guess, to see it on my perspective, okay? This, seven years ago, you know, it's, it's, I, I can't, I can't tell you that eight years I've been here and every time we come up with an extra job, I can't do that. You have to hire me somebody else. So I, I spend fifteen thousand dollars with, with, with nine-one-one. But i- if I wanna put it back in that department, I have to pay, I have to pay seventy-five thousand dollars to hire somebody. And you ask, what more are they gonna do? Oh, they'll do a bunch of other stuff. What stuff? Well, w- why do I have to hire somebody seventy-five thousand dollars? You know, bet, wages, benefits, everything included.
Right.
We're talking that kinda money.
Yep.
So I was just hoping.
Well, I mean, we're willing to take on the courts, but there's, there is.
That would be that full fifteen.
Yeah, so you, so you would.
Okay, I'm not.
No, no, no.
Asking for more.
Yeah. You know, I feel like uh, you know, it's a concession trying to take the clerk position that we have that we're already missing and is already a struggle in our office and trying to change it to this lean position um with it. Taking into consideration right now the inability to hire another person and, and respecting that. Um, but also trying to respect the fact that we're paying fifteen thousand dollars for somebody else to do what we should be doing. Because that's one of the concerns I have is the fact that bench warrants are veiled on their face. So if they're not taken out properly because the court, you know, I withdrew the bench warrant or they were already arrested and it wasn't taken out correctly, that's bothersome to me.
Okay.
And so, you know, it's, those are the things.
Liability.
Yeah, it's liability for all of us, but um, you know, I just am trying to, trying to um help with that. So we're, we're taking some of that role that we should be taking, um, but still trying to stay within the number of people that we have currently. At least that we have positions for.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, the operators, the, the people working in nine-one-one, they don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
But the nine-one-one board will. Uh, we negotiated that with them. They will do it.
Yes.
And.
But they would rather not.
Well, the operators themselves don't wanna do it. Uh, the other ones, they like to see the money come in and I get that. Um, I just want it absorbed within.
Yeah.
The way we do it.
Right.
No, no, this, this, but this position is the budgeted in this year and this, in the instant, requested budget already.
Yes.
You're just asking, as we have asked, if you would ask us, do we do this? That's all.
Yeah, we're just, using our proposed budget as we put any, any of them and just, I'm just kinda letting you guys, guys know kinda the breakdown of what we're gonna do that as far as staffing goes. Um, and what would probably end up having to happen right now, since we can't, is to hire them as a clerk, our low, our low-level clerk, I'm assuming. Um, until we figure out, you know, cause like I said, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do this lean thing right away. If it's gonna take some time to get it in, we have to get through time and all that and then get them trained. And then, of course, my staff, depending on what we do as far as the union and creating that position and where they would be, you know, level-wise, cause they wouldn't be.
Well, you're just creating a job, aren't you? You're not creating a new, new job.
No, no, we're not creating a new position.
No, right. No, right, not a position, a new title. Title.
Yeah, gotta have a title, yeah.
Well, because they, they have job titles in the union contract. This will be a union position. So I'm just trying to stick with.
I don't agree with everything the union comes up with either, so.
I'm just saying, though, what we're trying to do is take into consideration that, that because of the union, other people would have a chance for that position too, if they wanted to change or we have to offer that, so. Anyways, I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea to, I was, you know, hoping that, um, you know, there'd be some, at least. Happiness over the savings. Um, and we will continue to do that. We'll continue to try to save where we can um and go from there.
How come the judge's salary pass through? Like there, it doesn't show in the new, and the old it does for twenty-two, eight, six, two, and there's nothing.
Because it's finally been worked out to where Oglema County is not receiving Judge Beebe's wages. Like effective, what, last two weeks ago when we were corrected by Jody, I think, has that been about that time?
Two weeks ago seems like months ago right now, but yeah.
It was, that being done correctly, we fixed it to be not correctly, so that you guys won't have to work. So another savings that was in the budget, didn't have to be in the budget, and we're good.
That was the, the paying, yeah, the paying back and forth, yeah, right.
Yes.
Anything else, Commissioner Scott?
No. Nope, I covered my, oh, uh, circuit court, how many administrators in circuit court?
Just one.
Just one?
Yep. One administrator that goes back and forth.
Right, what's the level there? Oh, wage?
Sheet seventy-five oh three six is our salaries in Roscommon.
Five.
Zero, seven five zero three six.
Three six.
Which would be my wage with not coming to Oglema County.
Okay, okay. This the question?
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's what we're here for.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for answering my question.
Yes, absolutely. Happy to use them. Thank you.
Item eight C claims. Hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to uh pass the claims.
I'll support it. Commissioner Scott and I.
Say that one more time.
Hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-six cents. Commissioner Scott and I reviewed them. They were very low. It wasn't much.
No. I, nothing stood out.
Maybe there's.
Uh, Commissioner Wiltzy asked me to do it because of, he's, was absent this week and. I didn't have a problem. I guess it's practice because another two weeks I'll be doing it for three months, or I'll be doing it for six months, probably.
Yeah, I didn't.
Actually do it all winter.
I was shocked there, they were so low. Any questions? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Unfinished business, any commissioners? Administrator slash controller's report.
We've got the written report among the meeting materials. I do want to update you on our situation with the, the moving to a lockup with the jail. Uh, I followed up with Gladwin County. They're very interested in taking all of our inmates uh in Gladwin County. I was hoping to have a draft contract in front of you tonight. Unfortunately, the jail administrator in Gladwin has suffered some kind of an IT calamity and they weren't able to get it uh out of his machine. Uh, so I expect that probably will be here tomorrow. I'll send that out to you uh in, in email. We did start with the uh boilerplate that we started with, that was prepared by our council. I understand there will be some minor tweaks to it, uh but then we'll all be here and then hopefully by next week, we'll schedule a meeting with law enforcement committee and representatives of Gladwin County to go over any of the finer details. And get that all to you and get this locked up before the budget needs to be adopted on the twenty-sixth. Uh, on just one other item, just kind of budget related, I was approached earlier in the week, I believe it was last week, about allocation to the airport. And questioning about, uh, you know, is there any opportunity for reduction there? That's a roughly sixty-six thousand dollar allocation that we do. Uh, just for background for the board, there is an agreement with the city that sets up the formula for the funding of the local matches. So the county does a fifty-five percent match, the city of West Branch does forty-five. The short version of this is there is really no opportunity to reduce that, although it wouldn't have a huge impact on our general fund anyway, but it comes down to with the airport, the majority of their funding that they use to operate is from other sources, and a lot of it from the federal government. By an example, this year when that runway was done, there was a required local match, let's say a hundred ten thousand dollars, somebody's in that uh range. That's almost exactly what the city and the county put into the airport by itself. If we were to reduce that, it would impact what the airport is eligible for moving forward, and I don't think it's in our interest to invest with that formula. Um, that's it. I think after meeting with the airport manager and with the airport board director and even the city manager. If it came down to it, we could not afford the allocation, they would figure something out, but it would not be an easy thing to do. I was also very impressed, if you ever get an opportunity to talk to Ben, uh with the work that he's already done about the impact of the airport. I know there have been some questions. Brought up uh periodically over the last few months about the value of the airport, but they were able through work they do with the state to actually identify roughly a hundred ten jobs in the community that would not be here. Uh, but for the airport, uh, just because the corporations wouldn't locate here and and the U P S is a fine example, you would not have as big a facility here as we have. Uh, so the airport really is contributing in that way, if there was any question. I had no doubt in, in my mind, but it was really nice to see the preparation. On their part for that meeting made it very easy to explain all that. So, uh, all that being said, um, I think we're good there. The airport actually sets its budget in March. And they do that because the city is on a July and one fiscal year, and they need to have all these numbers around so both the city and the county can prepare their budgets for the coming year. So uh with that being said, it would be almost impossible right now to make a reduction, knowing that their budget is already set. So it's good education, uh but very satisfied with that number that's uh presented in the budget. Uh, willing to answer any questions anybody has.
I, I wanted to give you um asks, because I've been asking the community this past week. Um, about some statements that were made at last week's meeting. Um, if you can clarify, I, I definitely want to make sure that it's uh. Factual and clarified, some, some questions were asked by an individual or stated, I should say, uh, related to other contracts with inmates and, and what happened with those contracts. Can you? Um, I, I don't recall the details. I know there was a, a detail with Gladwin at one point in time. Um, can, can you give a quick synopsis, synopsis of that?
I can, and I apologize actually to prepare for that, and I'm glad you reminded me. I'd have glossed right over it. Uh, first, but the Gladwin situation a year ago. There was discussion about Gladwin bringing their inmates to Oglema County on a, an agreement similar to what we're proposing to do with them right now. Uh, but that was um. In the planning stages and in the end, Gladwin County decided to make whatever modifications they needed to make to their facility to keep it open rather than to contract with us. Uh, we were talking round numbers at the time, but never did really zero in on exactly the number of what that would be. But probably would have been somewhere between thirty-three and thirty-five dollars per inmate per day. And I say that just based on what the, what the market is in the area.
So obviously, they never move, I'm sorry, if I don't remember. Obviously, they never moved forward with, with contracting their inmates out to, I think it was clear if I remember right, okay.
Right. So I did prepare just a brief statement. In this statement, I've actually asked Tom to post revised uh. A narrative on the website, uh that jail narrative report that we did last time, so this will all be in there as well, but. Uh, I'll just read to you what, what's uh written in there now, and just to set this up, our independent auditor report for fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, did provide us with an inmate cost per inmate per day. It's fifty-seven dollars, makes sense. And I'll just remind you that. This is not something new that the auditors are doing. They've been doing this for many years and reporting it in the audit. Uh, and I've said in the past. The formula that they've used to put together to come up with the sixty-seven oh six might not be exactly what I would do. But it is definitely a credible number. I've looked at the various variables that they put into this, and it has fluctuated year to year, depending on the number of inmates that we have on average in the facility.
That's not, I'm sorry, but I had a question, and I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, please.
That's not part of our payment on that, is, let me rephrase that. Is that part of our, is that figure part of our payment on that building?
No.
Thank you.
This is just the operational.
Okay, go ahead.
For the jail. Uh, housing Oskota County inmates at our jail produced a contracted revenue stream of thirty-one dollars per inmate in twenty twenty-three, and I'm using twenty twenty-three because we have all the audited numbers in. Uh, right now, so it's a good solid figure to work with. Uh, and that produced uh an annual total uh revenue of about two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars for the county. But using the independent auditor report and their cost per day, the actual cost of housing these inmates at sixty-seven oh six. Meant that Oglema County paid, literally subsidized these inmates. To the tune of thirty-six dollars, six cent per inmate per day. So in other words, uh, Oskota County got a deal. They're paying thirty-one, we're paying thirty-six oh six to house those inmates. That ended up in a net loss for the county of forty-two thousand, eight hundred seven dollars in twenty twenty-three. On March sixteenth of last year, the board was presented with a proposal to house inmates from Calcasas County at the same rate of thirty-one dollars per inmate per day. From published reports in April, we know that the Calcasas County inmate population fluctuates between twenty-seven and thirty-five. Using these known variables, it's accurate to state that the proposed agreement would have generated between three hundred five thousand and three hundred ninety-six thousand in new revenue. But would have cost Oglema County between three hundred fifty-five thousand and four hundred sixty thousand to house those inmates. Again, you've got the breakdown. The sixty-seven oh six per inmate per day, if we're taking in only thirty-one dollars. That thirty-six oh six is being made up somewhere, and that somewhere would be the general fund. Had that contract been signed. Estimated loss would be between forty-nine thousand and sixty-four thousand in the year. Now, we didn't realize that loss because you didn't sign that contract.
Didn't we counter with them though, just to re- refresh, but didn't we ask for thirty-five and they rejected?
I did ask for thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
And we did not hear back from Calcasas after that, but we do know as of April twenty-four, they are paying thirty-five per, to Westford County.
Where they going?
Westford County and Cadillac. That is uh less of a drive than it would be for them to have come here. Uh, but yeah, bottom line is, I don't know where that thirty-three dollar proposal went, but they are paying thirty-five now. Now, most recently, Grand Travers County inquired about housing up to forty inmates per day for about six weeks. But Grand Travers, as we reported, would not or could not commit to a long-term uh agreement, which unfortunately, uh, that just simply wouldn't provide enough relief. Uh, for our budget situation and frankly, would have maybe delayed some of the funding decisions that we have to make here in a couple of weeks, or delayed that maybe another six to eight weeks. And so those costs would have continued to be borne by Oglema County. I hope this clears up any misunderstanding. The narrative, it should be on the webpage, certainly by tomorrow. Uh, so if anybody needs to actually look at these numbers, they can, but bottom line is that we were not frankly charging enough on those uh contracts. Uh, if you want to do at least a break even. Um, we should take that per inmate cost per day and look at what half of that is, that maybe is what we should be charging. Like the thirty-five number. Much closer to working than the thirty-one number, but that one dollar fluctuation is pretty significant uh throughout the year. So, you know, just. For future reference, you know, should be be in that uh position. Again, we'll want to make sure that we're not in a position of literally subsidizing uh these other counties.
Anything else, Tim? I'll let you, anything else? Elected officials and department heads. Did you?
I had a question on that.
Oh, go ahead.
The, what was the cost of the twenty-three sixty-seven what? Per inmate?
Sixty-seven oh six per inmate per day.
Would that, how much would that drop if you averaged thirty more inmates a day for the whole year, for the whole?
Well, we don't know, because if we had thirty more, but if we had thirty more inmates per day, you're probably coming back and asking for more staff too, so all we could do is speculate. What we have is a firm number that the auditor put up, and that's the number that's.
I asked a question, the cost of the inmate comes down, is I, am I correct?
No.
That's what I, I'm not, I'm not correct. If the staff stays the same, the cost stays the same.
And so what will happen?
You're having paid and paying the same staff.
Okay. Nothing else, Tim?
No.
Elected officials and department head reports.
Clerk. Brett Gildner, you're Oglema County clerk. Um, just want to report that I have sent out, we received the ballot proofs. I've sent them out. Um, to everybody on the ballot waiting for approval. So that is where we're at with that. Uh, we still are waiting because Kennedy filed a federal. Suit to see if he can get taken off. As of right now, he's still on, but um, the majority of the counties are waiting to print their ballots. Because of that, um, it is. Potentially going to maybe be an issue. My deadline from the state is to have absentee ballots available to the clerks by the twenty-first. Of. September. Yeah, two weeks, yeah. Um. So. Depending on what direction we get from the state, we may or wait, we may or may not make that deadline. Um. So if people are asking you guys when their absentee ballots, if you hear anything about that. It's hopefully by the end of the month. Um, it might potentially be the following week that we get them. I don't know yet. Um, but. We are. Close. Uh, election commission is going to start meeting for early voting stuff. Um, we are doing early voting again. The. Nine days before, which is. October twenty-sixth through November third, uh, at the county building again. Um. So that's where we're at with all that.
Commissioner?
Good evening, Karen Pickles, you're Oglema County Treasurer. On your iPads, you'll find the August cash summary report highlighting your negative cash. We're a month to go before year end. Uh, your balance ending August thirty-first is a negative two million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Very important that we pay attention to those numbers for year end. I also included a cumulative cash flow report for general fund, and your bank risk ratings are on your iPads as well. I wanted to let you know we held tax foreclosure sale on August eighth. We had twenty-six properties that were foreclosed and went to sale. Actually, I had twenty-eight because two of those went, went to, went to um. The land bank for future collaboration with our housing advisory committee, and one went to City of Rose City for development. So twenty-six properties went to sale, twenty-four of them sold. I have two more to go, and we'll wrap up those seven number number first. Wanted to give you an update because we haven't talked about land, land bank recently. Um, two of the properties that we completed projects on have sold. One has been sold to a developer who is planning to put a house on it this fall. I don't think I've shared that with you, so we actually see the full circle of the land bank process from. Um, purchase, demolition, to renovation, to construction. So it's a very exciting process, and we're good to see that whole circle through um. Here in Oglema County, and I feel that that's really exciting. Um, we have one project in the uh Rose City area that we're waiting on to install testing wells. And once we have some final numbers and reporting from them on the environmental testing, we can move forward with selling that property, and we have several interests. Um, of neighboring property owners that are interested in purchasing, so. That's also exciting. And then we have one more project in the Village of Prescott that we're working on on Washington Street. It's commercial property, and there's lots of hoops to jump through. But we're looking forward to moving forward on that project once we get some RFPs from Tim. Um, and then I wanted to let you know too that I attended the MATT conference in August, and a lot of interesting material at our sessions. One of them was focused on AI. Chat, you know, the chat, GPT, and all of the different platforms that are out there and how we can incorporate that into our work production. Super exciting and super scary all at the same time, so. Any questions?
May I?
Go ahead.
Um, the negative cash, uh, the unpaid taxes, because of the tax cycle, that'll make some difference.
Receivable?
Yeah.
Yep, taxes are still rolling in.
But I mean, that'll change that, that bottom line.
That and adjusting journal entries, but.
I know it's still being a negative, but I mean, it will make the adjustment.
It'll soften before year end.
Did you pay your taxes?
I got them. And I got the checkbook in the truck, and I got the, the tax bill.
Have till Monday.
Okay, all right. See my township.
See your township.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Sharon, do you have anything to add?
First of all, I was asked to give that to you.
To me?
Yeah, from that female, I didn't get her name.
Oh, okay.
You got it?
Thank you.
All right.
What I'd like to do tonight, uh Jenny, we don't mind calling you Jenny, right?
Not.
But I, I, I just, I just got some statements that I want to make.
Please.
And I want to direct them right to you, and no disrespect to that board, but I just want to talk to you about this, but they can hear and everything, but.
Not disrespect to me, is it?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Um, first of all. I, I, I'm, I'm confused. About the layoff notices, okay, that I got. I got eleven layoff notices uh presented to my office. I got eleven layoff notices uh, presented to my office um, Monday afternoon. I think it was uh, three fifteen. Uh, by the time the email was opened up by the undersheriff, it was uh, four fifteen. Okay. Um, I was out of town. Uh, the undersheriff had called me. Um, and I didn't answer the phone, but when I got home, I called him at eight o'clock at night and found out that these layoff notices were. Were sitting in our desk. So he did not serve them based on, because I didn't tell him to, which is, I'm glad he didn't. But on Tuesday, we did, we did serve them. Um, I served ten of them. Ten out of eleven. And it was uh, under protest. I wrote a letter out and I'm sure you got that.
We did, I read it.
Under, under protest. It's because. Uh, no board approval for the layoff notices for number one, unless I'm missing something. Did the board approve to do, do the layoff notices? I don't believe so. Did the board approve a budget? Did they, did they approve to serve the pink slips? I already said that. Um. Did the board take any action on closing the jail? Where's the inmates going? I found out today, tonight, just a few minutes ago, they possibly may go to Gladwin County. Okay, um. And, and, and the, the voluntary, volunteer people that, that wants to take the volunteer wasn't even adding into this. So, so all these slips that was handed out, the ten slips that was handed out. Uh, could change quite, quite drastically depending on who wants to take a volunteer. Um. It, it, it stounds me that I'm not kept in the loop of what's going on with, 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 with the jail that I'm in charge of. You know, I, I, I find that pretty disturbing. Um. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in charge of the custody and care of the inmates. I should know exactly what's going on with that jail over there and I'm not. I'm, I'm in the dark with it and, and that's, that's wrong. Hundred percent wrong. The, the letter that went out to Oscoata. Sheriff Grace, thirty day quit. The sheriff, or the, the letter that went out to medical, thirty day quit. I wasn't in that loop. Was there a board decision to do that? I don't believe so. Um, and the pink slip to uh, my lieutenant. He did not get served. I'm not serving a veteran that's been there seventeen years on a layoff because, because you want to change it from a lieutenant. To a jail administrator? That's a union issue. That is strictly a union issue. If, I'm not going to get involved in, in, in violation of a contract. I'm not going to get involved in unfair labor practice that could possibly happen. I'm not getting involved in that. That is a veteran that's been here seventeen years and I'm not going to give him a layoff notice. I have the right to lay off, or I have the right to hire, fire, promote and demo. That's my job. And I don't, I don't mean to be raising my voice.
You're fine. Go ahead.
Um. I, I, I totally get that we are, we're under a financial problem. I, I get that. We all do. But. I, I had an opportunity for all of us about a year ago. Calcaso, Calcaso contract. They are now, and Tim had said that a few, few minutes ago, they are now paying thirty five dollars a head. Which my, my thought is to get them in. And, and actually, Mr. Wilsie had said the same thing prior to his vote. He says, well, let's just get them in. That was the plan, to get them in. They're paying thirty two dollars an hour, whatever it was. The plan was to get them up to thirty five. To help us out. That, that thirty inmates, that thirty inmates would have brought in thirty one thousand five hundred dollars. Monthly. Thirty one thousand five hundred dollars monthly, and that's based on a thirty day month. Okay, that, that was null and void. That ship sailed. That'll never happen. Uh, my last ditch effort. Was Traverse City. They're willing to bring thirty five inmates. It wasn't a long contract, but you know what? Same with Calcasas. I want to get them in here. Find out how fine a facility we have, how, how, how that place is run. That, that place is run tremendously good. Um. That, if we would have got them thirty five inmates in here, that would have brought in thirty six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Thirty six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars monthly. Thirty days, month. Times that, times that by one year. Along, along with Osco, to which we're gonna lose. I mean, thirty day, no, he's gone. Um, along with Osco, to which had brought in, which had brought in. From the months of January to August of this year, January to August of this year, eight months. That brought in a hundred and forty seven thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. A hundred and forty seven thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. That would, that would offset the, the cost, would have brought the inmate, which, which Tom was trying to explain, it would have brought the inmate cost down. You've got to overhaul, you have to overhaul cost of the jail, you bring more inmates in, you get that money, that cost comes down and equals it out. That's the, that's what we want to try to do is equal things out. That place over there ain't made to make money. It's made to, it's made to run, so it, it's self-sufficient. It'll probably never do that, but you know what? Fourteen years ago, the people voted to do that.
Commissioner Simmons?
It costs six, six million dollars to build that fourteen years ago. Six million dollars. We still have a bond on it for until twenty thirty nine, twenty thirty nine. This year, we're paying three hundred and forty five thousand dollars roughly. That might not be the exact num- number, but it's three hundred forty five thousand dollars this month or this year. Bad decisions, I'm thinking. Um. And, and, and with, with the numbers that I give you, the monthly numbers, does not, and I repeat, does not. Include commissary, phone service and other incomes that comes from that jail, other revenues. The commissary is huge. And I, I've got emails from the auditor that, that I'd love to share with you. Um, regarding the, the money that we've received in two thousand twenty three. Okay. Um. You don't see my name on that jail. You see Ogama County on that jail. That's Ogama County's jail. Uh, which, which means. Making all of us responsible for the decision being made. It's our responsibility. Your responsibility. And, and I don't mean just to pick on you, but I'm, I'm saying our responsibility to make the right sound decisions on, on, on that building. Um. What I did, uh, Claire, uh, Claire County now has Traverse City inmates, by the way. Um. What I did is had Lieutenant Howard prepare. Um. The concerns that we have, opening up a, a lockup. We, we know we're destined there. We know, we know, we know that's where we're headed. So now we gotta try to figure out how we're gonna, how, how are we gonna, how are we gonna uh, make this work that's safe for the people? Safe for our inmates, safe for our staff. It was six, it was six people. There's no way that that can happen. No way. Um. I'm gonna let Tom give a synopsis of what he feels is gonna happen and, and, and you gotta understand, Lieutenant Howard. Worked in this jail for seventeen years, roughly. He knows the inside and out of this jail. He knows what will work and will, will, will not work. My trust is in him. I surround myself with very good people and he knows what he's doing over there. Um. I'm gonna, if, if you don't mind ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn that over to him and, and let him tell you some of the, some of the problems that, that we think we're gonna be faced with.
I do, I just want to ask you specifically, since you and I are, are carrying on a conversation here, um. I asked, and I don't believe, I, I thought initially too, that the building that the jail was put on for a millage. I was instructed it was not. It was, it was, it was voted on by commissioners. So I do believe that that statement. Is not factual. Ogama County did not vote on that. As far as residents, the commissioners, yes, they did. The other quick question I have is, is Traverse, yes, you, you brought that to us. We never rejected it. Like it just came to a halt. It was never brought to us to approve, reject. It was community, it was, it was, it was conversation, it was communicated and then it was gone.
I, I was.
I agree with the statement as far as things not being voted on. I, you know, I, I think the direction and I, first of all, I guess I should have started with, I appreciate you coming and sitting down and, and talking. To us. I think I've wanted that for a while. I'm sure this situation's been extremely complicated and difficult for you.
Absolutely.
Instead, it seems like you've taken a step back to kind of uh.
Well, I'm hoping, I was hoping it'd work itself out, but obviously it didn't and.
I, I wish you would have been sitting here a month ago.
The last ditch effort was this, was this, this Traverse City. And what I understand is that it got turned down because there wasn't a long-term relationship. Doesn't mean.
Term bound by whom?
That, I'm not gonna answer that because I didn't, I wasn't making that meeting. So I would be.
What happened was, that was the night when we brought it here, that we had all the information. Winning the decision to not put it on for a millage.
Okay, now it's your, I.
It was, it was the direction we were headed.
I just had those response. Can you speak up so everybody can hear you?
That was the direction we had it because it was turned on.
So you guys, that's the direction you guys took. Okay.
It was, there was no more like at the end of the tunnel. It was, you got six weeks.
I just wanted clarification on that. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, you guys, I just, if you wanna.
Oh, sure.
I'm gonna read it when it's easier to. Just concerned, concerned with the county manager plan for staffing a twenty four seven lockup. Right now, there's only five officers that did not get their slip over there. Um, right now, control room's upstairs without, I don't know what it's gonna take to get it moved. I don't know how much, that has not been mentioned. If it's, if they looked into it or not, right now you have to have somebody up there in order to open up the doors to get in and out of the facility. Garage doors weigh thousands of pounds and you can't let nobody in without somebody upstairs. They need to be, they're gonna have to be moved to intake. Which is another, um. Staffing shorties trying to run a lockup for twenty four hours, seven days a week with five people is physically impossible. If you have four officers each working. On a twelve hour shift, one night, one day, a seven day rotation. Um, and one officer to run, doing all the transports for the warrant pickups, transports from the lockup. In multiple jails or one jail, taking inmates from court. Five days every two weeks, you have to go get the inmates, bring them back to court, sit there with them all day and take them back. Plus the new ones that you get. You know, transferring inmates, inmates for medical appointments or hospital coverage, et cetera. That person's gonna be just as busy. There's no way there's any leftover officers to cover vacation, sick, injuries. Medical appointments, family emergencies or medical leave. An example would be one officer works A rotation from eighteen to six. The other officer works B rotation on opposite nights. In a two week schedule. An officer on A rotation takes a two week vacation, the officer on the B rotation has to work a month straight to cover. It is completely unreasonable or expectation that an officer would have to show up to work that many days in a row. Officer burnout will follow. Also, if officers need time off for emergency leave, at the same time, there will be no one to cover the remaining, the shifts. Uh, the overtime for the budget is underestimated. Um. Just the officer's routine shifts, if they don't get their short days on five officers, they're scheduled for eighty four hours. That alone. Is about twenty hours overtime per pay period with twenty six pay, payrolls is eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. The overtime budget of his budget is only ten. Um, the safety and security, security concerns I was looking at, you have a medical inmate. Nobody to call while you're giving assistance to the inmate. You might be giving CPR, the guy's having a seizure and you're trying to get him to swallow on his tongue or whatever. You have to leave the inmate to go back to the phone to call EMS while the inmate lays in the cell. And a worst case scenario, you go in there and the inmate's faking and he overtakes the officer with no backup and the, and. Um, no one to call for assistance for him. Medical emergency with an officer, nobody to call for assistance, no monitoring, inmate can't call nine one one for you. Officer in a one-on-one allocation, nobody to call for assistance if something goes wrong in the one-on-one contact with the inmate. Violent inmates or inmates going through withdrawals, inmate begins going off and needs to be placed in a restraint chair for their own safety. This cannot be done by one officer. By the time assistance arrives, who knows what has happened. Suicidal inmate begins to try and kill himself, officer must decide whether he should go in by himself or wait to call for backup. To assist. By the time the assistance arrives, it'll probably be too late if the officer didn't go, go in. An inmate on suicide watch, the officer alone. Um, with him, cannot even go to the bathroom. You're not supposed to leave the room or to take a bathroom break, even if the inmate is behaving for movement. The officer is not allowed to leave intake, even to bring in a new inmate into the jail, intake must be observed twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. Even if there's only one inmate in there. Medical guidance, inmates come in with medications all the time. Officers are not allowed to give medication without the approval from a medical professional. Some inmates need to be given by doses. Um. Not missed, like insulin, seizure meds, heart medication, blood thinner, psychiatric meds. Inmate holding cells will need timely medication until transported to another jail. If there is no medical support, the inmate will have to be sent to the hospital, which will increase EMS calls, officer time sitting. At the hospital and with the inmate. All medical decisions will be up to the officer that's on duty. He needs, he needs to go and send them. Food costs, I don't, the lockup can hold up to seventy two hours and will need to feed these meals, depending on the time of day or how long they're gonna be there. On weekends, there's no coverage to be transported, so they'll be there from Friday night until Monday morning. And I don't think there's been a plan on the food, where it's gonna be gotten from or budgeted in there. With only one officer there at a time, there is no one to even leave to go get food, even for short holding stays. Many medical conditions have dietary requirements such as inmates who are diabetic. People working out of class cannot work in the jail. You have to be a certified corrections officer to work in the jail. And the MDLC inspection is up, you're just gonna be held like instruction that I just had last. That's all.
Thank you.
I have additional. Um, with that being said, just because you have something on paper that's gonna work. Doesn't mean it's gonna work. You know, you can make anything look good on paper. Um, that's not good. And I, I, I want to get out there and, and, and you touched on it, we gotta move the controller down. And, and, and that's gonna be a cost, cost effective. Uh, workload there. Um, I just want to get this out there because I want it on record. Um, I've heard some disturbing uh, comments regarding a snake in a wood pile. And that was uh, referring to uh, Ross Common County's uh, contract that we were working on. Okay, somebody had said that, uh, not, not directing it at me or my, or my staff, but I, I want to tell you that my office. Has a deeper integrity. Um. Or something like that. We're not gonna sabotage that contract because. Of a bad decision of closing it. That is the best alternative is Ross Common. That was the best alternative. So myself and my staff is not gonna sabotage that contract. We would not do that. I don't know why that, well, I, I kinda know why that was. Uh, taken down, but I won't, I won't get into that. And I've only heard this secondhand, so it's not any factual information that I've heard. Um, Jenny, if you got a few more minutes, I just wanted to.
Go ahead, you have the floor, so.
Touch on it, just a couple of things. And I don't, I don't mean to be raising my voice.
You're perfectly fine, go ahead.
But I'm, I'm passionate about my job. And, um. This, this is coming from my undersheriff. He presented this to me. Um, he would probably explain this better than I, I, I can. Um, and it's referring to the commissary. Um, and if you want further questions about this, probably he'd be the one to ask. But I just want to get it out there. In, in two thousand twenty three. Which is last year. Two hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars was transferred. Uh, to the general fund from a commissary fund, okay? Uh, to help offset the inmate care. And then, then I see on this, and, and, and I, I don't get this, I don't understand this, maybe you do. That, that transfer shows, let me see, shows, this, this has come from the auditor. After transferring that money, that, that hundred or two, two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars and nine, and nine hundred and sixty dollars. What they're telling me is that two hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-nine shows up in the general fund. Okay, so that money, that two hundred ninety, that two hundred eighty-nine thousand, three ninety-nine went into the general fund. That's the commissary that helps offset. The care custody of the inmates. And, and, and the reason why I can say that. Is, uh, a- another thing too, I want to, and, and it also shows five, five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars was transferred. To the transit fund from that money, from the commissary money. I don't know why, I don't know why five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars was transferred to the, to the tran, uh, transit fund. That could have bought me a car. Um, I don't understand that. Maybe, maybe this is out of my league. Uh, my undershare takes care of all this financial stuff, but it also says in here, um. None of that was shown in the net jail expenditures. So what does that mean? Does that mean that this commissary wasn't taken off the expense of the inmates? So you put the inmate up at sixty-seven thousand or sixty-seven dollars a day. If you take the commissary and add that to that, that, that's six, that's sixty-seven dollars is gonna come down. And only that, that, that will come down when you fill the jail up. You fill that jail up, you're bringing in more revenue, which is cutting the cost of the overall. Expense of the jail. That's, that's common sense, that, that's, that's one and two. It's, it's very simple math, if you think about it. Now, I, you, you know, you can throw a lot of confusion in this, but. We got it, we got to take into consideration that Bogomah County is growing and our jail is failing. That's not a good mix, in my book. So the sound decisions has to come from this board. Um, and, and my last statement that I want to say to you, um, couple of things. The more travel distance you have for these inmates, is the more money it's gonna cost us. Travel time, wage time, wear and tear in our vehicles. It's more money taken out of that four hundred thousand dollars that we're supposed to save. And, and quite frankly, Jenny, I don't, I, we'll, we'll see, another year from now, we'll see. And I hope I'm wrong. But we are not gonna save much money. I hope, I hope I'm wrong. But I run the place. You've got to put your trust in the department heads. The department says, I didn't get there for not knowing what the heck I'm doing. And, and, and the stuff that I don't know, I surround myself with great people and they give me direction. And I'm wise enough to listen to them. So from this date forward, I would hope and pray, I even throw that in there, pray. That there's more trust to your department heads that knows what is going on, that works that work. At a day-to-day basis. I didn't get my, my, my edu- education from that place overnight. It took me thirty-five years to figure it out. And I don't have all the answers, but I go to where I can get some answers. So, and that's all I have to say, and thank you for listening.
I appreciate, I appreciate you being here. I, I wish this conversation would have started two months ago.
Honestly, Jenny, I don't think it would have mattered.
It's not a fair, hold on, that's not a fair statement.
That's my opinion.
That's, that's correct, that's your opinion. Um, I wish this conversation would have started two months ago.
Me too.
This is not the direction I wanted to see this neither. This problem was definitely not, not going away.
No.
Um.
And, and.
I feel, hang on, I'll let you talk. I feel me sitting in this chair, I asked out loud a couple of different times, give us some help, give us some ideas. Give us something. You're a hundred percent right. I don't know how your department head ro- works. I don't, I don't want to know. I don't ever want to be over there. I walked through there once and that was plenty for me. I agree, a jail is not to make money. I've learned that over sitting in this chair. It is definitely not supposed to make money. But it's costing us a lot more than we have. The overtime, the medical, there, there's just things have, have, have continued to go up. I just wish way previous to this conversation, ticket writing, I, I, I have no other ideas. We asked, I specifically asked in a couple of different meetings, any ideas, any ideas you can give us would be extremely beneficial. The last thing I want to see is anybody laid off. Those are families. Those are individuals that live in this community. I wanted to take it, take it to, um, a millage, let the people decide. I agreed that, that, I, I didn't know what else to do. I said, this is where this is headed. I had this conversation two, three months ago. Unfortunately, we're here. But I do appreciate you sitting here and, and speaking, so I thank you for that.
But I did, I did kinda give a solution, what, what we could have done, and that's to, to get the inmates in. That's, that's the only solution that we had, is to get them in, get them in, get them in, get them in. You've gotta get them in to cut the cost down. Um, there's, there's, uh, other board members that can't see it that way, but, but I will tell you that, um. Trust in the people, that's, that, that's in place. The people trust us. We need, we need our five commissioners to trust us. And I'm not saying that, that all these don't.
And that goes both ways.
I'm not, absolutely it does, absolutely.
And I've been reading these law enforcement meetings, um, and it doesn't look like there's, and, and there's some information there. It, it doesn't look like there's. Uh, that is much communication or much information put in those meeting minutes that, that, that I wish there was, um, I.
I, I think. I think our meetings has been good.
Um, it seems like it's kind of been a push-pull from, from what I.
The biggest push-pull you're seeing is at jail. We don't want that shut down. We've been, we've been a year ago fighting the fight to, 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 to try to, to try to have people realize. How to, how to operate at jail, but nobody seems to listen. Nobody seems to listen to me.
I, I don't think that that's fair. I, 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 I mean, we could sit here and go back and forth. I don't think that that's fair when I, give us some solutions.
I just, I just hope from this day forward. That this board puts their trust in the department heads.
I think that comes down to communications, so I appreciate that.
That goes both ways.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here today, my name is Dorothy Munn. I am a policy and risk management educator with MSU Extension. And I was asked to come in and chat with you. We try to do that once a year to talk with you about our roles and what we do for the, the program. And that organism. I, um, began my career with MSU Extension in nineteen ninety-five. And I moved here in nineteen ninety-eight. I served for twelve years as your four-H program, um, agent. And as an educator, and then in two thousand and, um. Excuse me, twelve, I moved into a supervisory role and I was a four-H supervisor for fourteen counties across. Mid-Michigan, Northern Michigan area. And in two thousand and twenty-one, I transitioned to a policy and risk management educator. That's a statewide role and I do that right here from this office. Um, in that role, I work with program coordinators and many here in Northern Michigan. And I work on issues such as incident reporting, insurance coverage, contract negotiations. Financial management, group chartering, policy creation and IRS reporting are some of the tasks that I work on. I work collaboratively with our staff from across the, the state and value all of their impact. Um, I've spent the last twenty-nine years working for MSU Extension in the various progressive roles that I've been in. And with that, I've been able to work, um, closely with staff because I've served with them. And understand their roles as frontline employees who work with volunteers and with, with our four-H members, um, around positive youth development. So as I've been in this role for twenty-nine years, I've been able to witness all of our four-H members. And the positive impact that we've made across the state. Um, I've seen many of our four-H members grow and become community leaders and make tremendous impacts in our local communities. So with that, I'm, thank you for having me tonight and I've opened up any questions you might have.
Thanks. Well, that was a big list.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for us?
Not right now, no.
Thank you. Any other department heads, elected officials? Anybody on the phone? Someone's got their. I don't think, I don't, they're just good. Uh, manners from the floor.
I have them.
Mo- motions for adoption?
I have them all.
Commissioners reports. Commissioner Scott?
Oh, well, I got a few things, uh. I attended a road commission meeting and they're talking about roof repair there. Uh, there was a couple of different people from the public asking about signs. Um, where hills block vision and things like that. They, they have put out their oil pit, um, reconstruction bid package. Uh, I attended, uh, West Branch, the, the airport meeting. And let me say that next, next month, next, next week is our meeting. And there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony out there at twelve forty-five. For the new runway reconstruction. And then the, the Experimental Aircraft Association is, has the car show later on that evening. And also an open house for, for, because of the new runway. I attended, I attend the Mills Township Tuesday night. At the request of Commissioner Wiltsey, because he would not be around. Uh, I, uh. I just briefly said our two main things right now is, is budget. And, and negotiations. That's the two main things. I was asked by, uh, I was asked by one board member. Uh, about, uh, changes to the jail operation and I said, basically the inmates are gonna sleep over at neighbor's house. She was okay with that. It was nothing negative. Asked me if we're gonna move the sheriff's office into the newer building and I said, yes, and she said, that's great. No public asked me a question. I, uh, asked to leave early because I had my meeting up to Gloucester Township. I got up there a little bit late. The sheriff was there. I missed his presentation because I got there late. But I, before I could even sit down, I had to give my presentation, so basically I said the same thing. I, I, I would really like to, I'd really, since it's report time, I'd really like to, uh, address what, what all this is about. This exercise is not to close the jail. I, I think people are getting, people are, some people are getting the wrong idea. Make money, not make money, this, that. Our budget, our total budget, which, what, I, I say constantly that we can't take care of the sixty-two pages of the budget. Even if we bring in all these inmates and everything else, we are still in deficit. We, we have to cut something. So it makes it tougher because the jail is so expensive. It's, we have to do this, we have to cut someplace. No, we don't have to. I'm li- I'm glad we don't have to cut the sheriff's department any farther because we were able to pass the millage. That can sustain the sheriff's department. Because otherwise, the sheriff's department is a non-mandated service. We would have had to cut that too. But we don't have to do that because we have the, the, we have funding for it. We don't have special funding for, for the jail. We, we gotta cut. That's, that's what it is. It's, none of us want to cut it. If we didn't have to close it or change the, change the use of it, we wouldn't. But we have to because of the entire budget has to be done. I understand the sheriff comes in, he's very passionate. I am very passionate and I'll try to keep my volume down. But I'm very passionate about my job too. I haven't been here thirty-five years and hopefully I won't be, but. We have a budget to take care of. It has been in deficit for over twenty years. We have to do something. We're running out of money. Commissioner Wiltsey made that point last, uh, last, uh, uh, meeting. The, the funding we've been on is unsustainable. We keep ripping off the tax revolving fund. We, 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 we say nicely, we borrow from it, we never pay it back. We're getting, we're getting so close to the, to the no-go point that we're gonna have to borrow money. To pay back the taxes to the, to the townships and things. We did that back in the seventies. That means you go to the bank, you borrow money and you pay interest to get them whole. We're, we're getting close to that. Let's not get right to the point that that's what you have to do. You know, we, we can make a substantial change and save money and come up with a fund balance, something this county has not had. In over twenty years. That's what we have to be looking at. Now, some, some department heads tell me, cut everybody else. Well, if I go to the clerk's office, I cut somebody out of her office, she's not gonna like it. But I'm gonna ask her as department head, please do it. You know, find the way to make it work. I'm not doing it, but. I'm gonna do the same thing to any other department head, so now I'm asking the sheriff, we can't afford it. Here's, here's our problem. Here's the amount of money I can give you. Make it work. That's, that's it. That's it. You know, do we want to? No, we don't want to. But I don't, I can't take the can out and kick it down the road another time. Thanks, I'm done.
I attended Hill and Logan. Um, Hill was an extremely fast meeting. They talked a little bit about roads. Um, everything runs pretty smoothly up there. Uh, Logan, I attended as well. Uh, they got a lot of changes coming through. They talked a little bit about the election. They had to do, uh. I don't, it wasn't a recount, but they had to go back that night, so they had to pay some extra money to go back and re-put them in the ballot.
So they.
They were the, they were the last township to come in and their numbers didn't match, so they had to go back and re-zero and re-tabulate everything.
They got some legal fees that they're looking at, um, as far as paying, not paying, it's, it's. Um. The, the board is gonna go through some changes, which I, I, I hope is a good thing. Um, I believe it will be. So nine-on-one, I attended that meeting last night. Uh, they approved their budget. They are, have some trainees that are currently under training, three of them, that will be off-training soon. Uh, they're, they go over there overtime every single month. Jesse gives a very thorough report. Um, the overtime is down this past month. They did have, um, somebody that, uh, twisted their knee. They did have a, an employee that's, um, got hurt but is okay. Um, opiate committee, that was, I attended half of it on the way here and the other half, once I got here. Um, there wasn't a lot and unfortunately, there wasn't a lot in the attendance, but, uh, we did make a little, uh, some, some steps forward. Um, with that, and, and Tim was there as well, there are some ideas, um. As far as how to spend those monies. We have some asset mapping going on, um. I don't really know else to say about that.
Lots of ideas.
Yeah, that's where we're at right now. Nothing concrete. Gonna pass a look at some R, RFPs for some, uh, defibrillators, um, just. Kind of still throwing a lot of ideas out there, just making sure, uh, before we come to you guys, we know exactly what the plan is. Um, I didn't hear a lot about education or prevention. Um, that's the direction I really would like to focus on.
Um, I didn't hear a lot about education or prevention, um, that's the direction I really would like to focus on. Before we get to that point to where we need other things, they talked about some Narcan and Fentanyl strips and all sorts of things, um. But anyways, we got lots of ideas, we're moving forward, it wasn't in great attendance, uh, a lot of people were were missing in action, so there'll be more to come on that. Commissioner Mahu?
West Branch Township, and I guess they're on their second week of police coverage in that township. And they're happy with that.
Now, they contracted with the city, right?
City, yeah. I didn't make one, and that was pretty much it for them people.
That's it?
That's it.
Commissioner, oh, I forgot, we did claims too, that counts, Commissioner Simmons.
Um, I went to a couple township meetings, the big thing in Edwards Township is, um, short-term rentals. And they discuss that in in depth. Now, the, uh, the accolades, Mr. Ryan Veder, for working with them and providing them lots of information about. The ordinances and stuff, so Edwards Township will be, will be working with Mr. Veder. And, um, they do have, um. An organization, uh, in Edwards, every township, but there's certain locations where they have a lot of these rentals, short-term rentals, and they're trying to. Uh, hope they can stop them, because sometimes it leads to negative situations, um. In this location, where there's a lot of them. That's pretty much all that was. That I considered that was. Pretty, uh, important for those, uh, for those neighbors to find out, help them resolve this issue. So, Ryan's trying to give as much information as he can, and he's doing a great job, by the way, he's doing a great job.
Is that it? We've had the MTA as well, I think that was from, from, uh, that was, that was at Selkirk. Sabo Valley spoke there, Sabo Valley, individual, yeah.
I just had Parks and Rec was this morning, and I went to that, it's the most recent meeting, I forgot it, you know, senior moment. Anyway, um, yeah, um. And then I got a, then I got a call this afternoon that, I don't know, the sheriff might know about it a little bit, somebody got drunk and. Went over to High Banks and drove over top a dozen.
I was there.
Were you there, okay, so.
Go over what?
A dozen of the driveway, uh.
Six by six.
Six by sixes.
High Banks, so by River River? What are you talking about, High Banks?
The High Banks by the, by, by the River River, yeah, in the parking lot. Drove over top a whole bunch of them, so maybe we can, I don't care, he, his insurance company or him can pay for them.
Oh, you got the call because of Parks and Rec?
Yeah, Danny Johnson gave me a call, told me that that some guy got drunk and drove over top a little bunch of them, so. Yeah, well, it's not good, that's cost money.
I'm sorry.
Uh, they just, they have their EIN number for their five-one-C-three for the High Banks. And I guess they'll be getting their bank account situated, and. And I heard that Karen had a call from a donor already, that that wants to get some money put in there, so. We're, we'll, uh, be on our way over there, so. And then the RV park is wrapping up the end of the year, uh, it'll go till the end of October, as far as being open. But, uh, and then we were talking about doing some grinding, brush grinding and and small trees and stuff. Uh, we may be able to work a deal with the airport, the airport's going to rent a, a machine. And, uh, we may be able to share, share a little bit and keep the cost down, so. Yeah, otherwise, okay.
Any general public comment? Come on up, sir, you got, do you know the rules, or do you want me to?
I do, are you going to answer a question?
I can't, nope.
Then I have nothing to say.
Okay. You can make a statement. Come on up, sir, state your name.
Douglas P. Marsh for the Ogumah County Herald, I'll address myself to the chair, but, uh, it's to everybody. Uh, staff and officials, I've submitted some information requests, I just wanted you all to know. That, uh, uh, it's a small town, and I'm a approachable guy, and I talk to everybody. Uh, and I'm not, uh, digging into anybody for any special reasons. I just hear you talking about emails and correspondences and public meetings, uh, and sometimes those aren't included in the packet. Sometimes I want to look at them for myself, uh, for, uh, the the best understanding I can have of the situations that are developing. And I just wanted to put myself on the record that it's nothing personal, all professional and above board, and, uh. Just, uh, you know, journalism and public elected officials and county officials. And, uh, I hope everybody's on the same page as me.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
I am going to make a.
Come on up, sir.
Please, I'll make it brief.
You got three minutes.
You know, Bronson Richland Township Supervisor, I find it very appalling that you can never answer, ask a question at any of these meetings. So, if somebody has a question to the commissioners, you wonder why you're not getting a lot of support, how come you can't answer some simple questions? That's a statement, okay? Secondly, um, it, does Mr., I, this is another question that you can't answer, but. If the, if the board did not approve the layoffs, I am assuming Mr. Dalenti has the permission to send out pink slips without the board approval. Uh, the sheriff brought that up, if you remember, and, uh, of course, he didn't get answered either. Um, so if you didn't approve it, who did? Does our manager here have the authority to send out pink slips? Uh, a week ago, Brenda, excuse me, Commissioner Simmons, you said a week ago, the closing the sheriff's department is just the tip of the iceberg. Well, these are eleven layoffs that that got sent out by somebody, is only the tip of the iceberg if you got a one-point-four million dollar budget. Or deficit, because the stories that I've heard, you're going to save four hundred thousand dollars by closing the sheriff's department, that's a lot of money. But that's a long way, one-point-four. So, eleven layoffs is a tip of the iceberg to the layoffs that are going to come, because where else is the money going to come from, Craig? We've been friends a long time.
Any other comments, come on up, sir. Come on up, sir, hi, have a seat, what's your name?
David Distall Rath.
Spell that, might have to spell that one.
Grandpa, so we're good.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, I'm a part-time resident, uh, for the past forty-plus years. Uh, my background, uh, I'm a CPA. I was an auditor early on, and I was CFO, CFO of a large banking corporation. So, I have the background to understand what's going on, and it's my first meeting. So, I want to compliment all of you for putting him in the position. Because you 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 didn't get here overnight, and you won't get out of it overnight. But you got to get a plan, and you got to have somebody that can, can, uh, you can't have department heads. The way it was run, so I I really commend you for bringing him on board. And all I see is what I see in the paper, I don't have any context. So, I read the paper, and, uh, since he's been on board, I've seen some very positive, very positive things. Uh, and, uh, you know, and I know it's, it is, this meeting tonight was interesting, first one. Uh, you can't, you know, regardless, you you know, it's dollars and cents, uh, the revenue coming in. Has to meet the expenses going out, and if they don't meet, you can't continue to spend money on things if you can't match the dollars. And I agree, uh, I used to deal with this myself, people come in and say, I can bring in X dollars of revenue. But if the expenses, uh, exceed that, it doesn't work. And, uh, that's where I think, you know, he's going to really play a critical role in saying, and I hope you give him the authority. Uh, to, uh, as a, really a CFO, because that's what it's going to take to get yourselves out of this. And I, 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 I believe you can, uh, I I talk to Craig a lot, I know, I know him over the years, and, uh. Uh, and I want to see the county succeed, and I, I think, but you can't, you know, in in the two-point-four million. Uh, deficit, you you can't keep kicking that down the road. I mean, you you should develop some kind of plan, and I know, I totally understand the finances. But you still got to face those critical issues and figure a plan to whittle your way back out of the hole. Because that's the only way you, you know, you will, uh, succeed in in getting us back on solid ground.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Darton, I know this meeting's gone longer than you maybe anticipated, you remember it at such a fast clip, I thought we'd be out of here by six-thirty. But anyway, Julie Darton, MSU Extension, um, I wanted to let you know that before the committee of the whole meeting next week. Will, we, MSU Extension, are hosting the West Branch Chamber Business After Hours here. And we invite you to come at four-thirty, uh, before your meeting and join us for, um, pie and ice cream. And, uh, we've been encouraged to balance it out with some, um, vegetables and some protein. Um, so, uh, but there will be fruit pies, which I think, I'm not a nutritionist, but we we hire them, and so you might be able to count that as a fruit serving, I don't know. Um, but we'll have, we want to invite everyone to join us and learn about what we do with MSU Extension, we're going to try to keep it down. In the building while the meeting's going on, so we're not too out in front of the building. Um, but we invite everyone to learn about what we do with MSU Extension, and thank you so much.
It's pumpkin pie season.
There will be pumpkin pie, there will be apple pie, there will be chocolate pie.
I didn't want to say anything.
There will be some other fruit pie, we're still making our pie plans.
Thank you.
Ice cream will be vanilla.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
Could I make one point? To answer Mr. Bronson's question, can, uh, any, any questions can be submitted to the administrator.
Correct, and if anybody ever wants to be put on the agenda, they can definitely get with our, so you're going to be put on the committee of the whole, we just asked for, uh, the Monday before our meeting is the deadline. Um, so anybody is welcome, uh, to be put on our agenda, so.
Surely a township supervisor can get on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We are, all in favor, say aye. Posed, seven-thirty-two.